Council, regular meeting to order the day and time and the place as advertised. Our first order business is the pleasure of allegiance. We have some special guests here to help us with that tonight, so I will turn that over to them when they're ready. Thank you so much for your service and for being here. We all appreciate that. Yeah, good job.
The United States of America and to the Republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Our next order business, oh, I should say, Council President Kleberg may join us by Zoom at some point tonight. He had requested a link, but until then, or till that time, he is excused from the discussions. Our next order of business is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for individuals wishing to comment on agenda items or other items. They wish to bring the town council's attention, excluding those scheduled for a public hearing. If there may not be another opportunity to comment once an agenda item is addressed, individuals are encouraged to speak at this time. Individuals are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the mayor in consideration of others wishing to speak. Commentary is limited to three minutes or close to three minutes. If you see me fiddling with something here, I use my phone as a timer so that we try to honor that three-minute limit. Also, there is going to be a public hearing later in the agenda on foregone taxes, so if you have comments on that, they'll have to wait until that time. Otherwise, your Lewiston City Council pledges to promote practice of ability within the governing body respecting others and their viewpoints, and we would ask you to do the same. So if you're here tonight to offer any citizen comments, we do have a microphone in the middle of the floor. All we need is your name and your city of residence. We don't need your physical address. So with that, I will open it up for any citizen comments tonight. Behind you, sir.
This microphone back here?
Yep. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. As the city, I believe, is aware, there's recently been a potential zoning change or zoning issue.
I ask you to get up on the microphone so we can hear you, and those at home can hear what you have to say, too. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. It's come to my attention that the city has recently approved a reasonable request for accommodation for an address at 916 Grell Drive. I have some concerns specifically about the requested relief that the city apparently appears to have granted. The address in question is set to be the location of a drug and alcohol rehab home at this point, and it's my understanding that the city has granted a request to increase the amount of residents that can be in attendance at that home so that the rehab facility can operate. It's my understanding that they intend to have 16 patients in there at a time, and there are several different concerns that this could cause. Issues with parking, issues with the property not being properly set up as a commercial business. This is within a residential zone. As well as issues with fire and safety issues with this causing an additional burden to that particular neighborhood. So I just wanted to bring that to the city's attention, and I did not know if this was going to be an item that the city intends to put on air and an agenda in the future, but I wanted to raise that to the city at this point in time.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me, Mayor, can we please have the commenter provide their name and city of residence?
Douglas Kenyon, city of Lewiston.
Thank you. Further citizen comments. Jerry, welcome. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Can you hear me? Very good. Jerry Chavez, President and CEO of Valley Vision, and I live in Lewiston. You know, often a word of thanks is appropriate, right? I want to say thank you to the council for their support for Valley Vision and its efforts. While this, well, we're not scheduled to give you an update on our contract, I'm going to take a little bit of time just to give you the numbers if I can. You know, our contract runs on an annual basis, and in particular, if you look at the contract, we've exceeded all expectations and all our benchmarks. Very briefly, we are expected to conduct between 10 and 24 qualified meetings in various markets. Those markets are four. Last year, we traveled to six markets for a total of about 19 qualified meetings. So once again, we are a little bit above the threshold, so to speak, and within that, within that business attraction activity, we're expected to conduct site tours. Last year, we conducted nine site tours. What's not in your contract is how many LOIs are we expected to generate on annual basis. An LOI is somewhat of an agreement that we're going to work collectively, Valley Vision and a company, to try to consolidate or try to consummate a deal. Today, we have three. And what else is not in your contract between Valley Vision and the city is how many deals will we land annually? It's a little hard to project. It's a little hard to come up with a number because there are so many factors that go into making structure in a deal. But we're happy to announce last year that we were at our annual meeting that Cascade Plastics did come from the Twin Cities area to make their announcement that they're going to construct a 35,000-square-foot building and employ somewhere north of 30 employees. So with that being said, once again, thank you for your support to Valley Vision, and I'll take any questions that you might have.
I don't do questions, but thank you, Jerry. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Jerry.
Further citizen comments. Okay, I don't see any, so we will wrap up citizen comments. We will next move to presentations. Council, Roman numeral four, item A, Veterans of Foreign Wars, VFW First Responder Awards. Presentation of the VFW Veterans of Foreign Wars First Responder Awards. This is an action item, and we have with us tonight our Fire Chief Greg Reitmeyer to lead us in this presentation. Chief, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and everybody here and at home. It's an exciting night for police and fire to have some of our folks recognized for their efforts. We're going to start out first this evening with the VFW. We have with us Lee Harding, who's the state junior vice chair, or commander, sorry, and David Jacks, our awards chair. They're going to make presentations to two Olympia, or two Lewiston firefighters and a police officer. Let's see, if I could have Jonathan Sells and Brian Burke come up, please. Come on up, gentlemen. I'm going to get this out of the way of the flag because that's a, an outstanding photo backdrop. You will hear for just a second, police officer, Chief Kuzic. Sorry, which officer is VFW award? There we go. Matt, come on up. Thank you. Sarah Showers? She's on duty tonight, so. Somebody has to be. So just real quickly, Jonathan Sells is, oh, here, you have it.
Mr. Sells, American Legion?
Don't have a word for Mr. Sells. We don't have a word for Mr. Sells. Mr. Sells.
Brian Burke, Christian.
Swappes.
He beering milk would be an American Legion awardee.
All right. Thank you, chief. It's a pleasure here to be here tonight to give away, or not give away, but present first responder awards from the Veterans of Foreign Wars. Our particular, particular awards is a state award, so our awardees tonight are the ones that won, basically have been going to be recognized for the whole state of Idaho because it is a state program, and, and the certificates themselves are signed by our national officers. So I'll start out with the first award. Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, VFW National Firefighter Award presented to firefighter Brian Burke. In recognition and utmost appreciation of his dedication and selfless service to the City of Lewiston Fire Department, during firefighter Brian Burke's outstanding career, he has displayed an exceptional record of exemplary and courageous service to the community and the nation. His extraordinary commitment is in keeping with the esteemed core values and traditions of the firefighter profession, further manifested by the high degree of admiration and respect of both his peers and the local public he serves. Firefighter Brian Burke is truly a role model to all firefighters, and this honor reflects the proudest ideals of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. In witness whereof, we have heron to set our hands and the official seal of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, signed Alfred J. Lippart, Commander in Chief, Dan West, Adjutant General. The next award, Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, presented to firefighter paramedic Chris Jones. In recognition of utmost appreciation of his dedication and selfless service to the City of Lewiston Fire Department. Sound familiar? During firefighter paramedic Chris Jones' outstanding career, he has displayed an exceptional record of exemplary and courageous service in the community and the nation. His extraordinary commitment is in keeping with the esteemed core values and traditions of the firefighter profession, further manifested by the high degree of admiration and respect of both his peers and the local public he serves. Firefighter paramedic Chris Jones is truly a role model to all firefighters, and this honor reflects the proudest ideals of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. In witness hereof, we have heron to set our hands and the official seal of the Veterans of Foreign Wars, Alfred J. Lippart, Commander in Chief, Dan West, Adjutant General. Yeah, that one's not here. Now into our police division. Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, VFW National Law Enforcement Award, presented to patrol officer Matt Anderson. In recognition and utmost appreciation of his dedication and selfless service to the City of Lewiston Police Department, during patrol officer Matt Anderson's outstanding career, he has maintained a record of highly professional and exemplary service to the community and the nation. His extraordinary commitment clearly illustrates the proud core values and traditions of the law enforcement profession, further highlighted by the degree of admiration and respect of both his peers and the local public that he serves. Patrol officer Matt Anderson is truly an exceptional example of all who wear the badge, and this honor reflects the proud ideals and high standards to the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. In witness whereof, we have heron to set our hands and the official seal of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, again signed by Alfred J. Lippart, Commander in Chief, Dan West, Adjutant General. And new to the VFW, or fairly new to the VFW is this award, is our Communication Specialist Award. Unfortunately, this individual is working. Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, VFW National Dispatcher Award, presented to Communication Specialist Sarah Showers.
Is that her name right?
Hey.
Looks like it might be an M.
In recognition and sincere appreciation of her dedication and selfless service to the City of Lewiston Police Department, during Communication Specialist Sarah Showers' outstanding career, she has maintained a record of highly professional and exemplary service to the community and the nation. Her extraordinary commitment clearly illustrates the proud core values and traditions of the dispatcher profession, further highlighted by the degree of admiration and respect of both her peers and the local public she serves. Communication Specialist Sarah Showers is truly an exceptional example to all dispatchers, and this honor reflects the proud ideals and high standards of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States. In witness whereof, we have heron to set our hands and the official seal of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States, signed Alfred J. Lippart, Commander in Chief, Dan West, Adjutant General. Mayor Johnson, city council members, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight.
Oh, it's all you. You're going to emcee the whole night.
Thanks.
Oh, I know.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Next up, we'd like to ask our American Legion representatives, John Trembada, who's the post 13 commander, and Andy Jackson, who's the vice commander, and Jonathan Sells, firefighter, and Richie Lucas, deputy fire chief, along with. Station, yeah, I know. That'll be Sergeant Nick Eiler.
My name is John Trembada, commander, post 13. Every year, we go out, recognize basically firefighters, public people that helps the community in full. So this year, for the firefighter of the year, it goes to Richie Lucas. And we do have a $50 gift card, so you can feed, probably buy a hamburger or something, maybe. Okay, next one we are giving out is a paramedic of the year, which is going to Jonathan Sells.
I thought I seen you out there.
Yeah. And you also get a $50 gift card. Okay, and the last one we have is a police officer of the year, and it's going to go to Nick Eiler.
Chief, would y'all like to say anything about the paper?
Thank you very much. We appreciate your guys' service. It's an honor to, to be able to just follow the example that was set for us by our fathers, our grandfathers, and as that generation passes on, we, we appreciate your example and the leadership that you've set. Just a quick word about Deputy Chief Lucas. It's kind of unusual for us to recognize chief officers for this. And Deputy Chief Lucas, the awards at the fire department, we get together as our command leadership team, so we have our operations team, our union leadership, and our admin leadership. And while Chief Lucas was out of the room as we were discussing this, and this says a lot about him, is his, his battalion chiefs that worked directly for him said, we got to recognize this guy and the hours that he puts in, the selflessness and how he leads from, from the front and also in the background. So just a great job there. And firefighter, paramedic Sells, you'll see he's wearing his honor band, or honor guard cords. He's been instrumental in getting our honor guard reestablished in the valley, and as well as, he took on a huge project this last year for us in redoing our, our protocols of how we treat our patients. There's a whole, I guess, kind of like a recipe card book that says if this, do that, and the doctors have laid that all out, and he helped the committee that aligned our Washington and Idaho all together in one valley. So there's one set of protocols, so tremendous amount of work, and that's, that's why they were both nominated.
Thank you, chief. And again, I want to, gentlemen, everybody for this awards, thank you very much. Thank you for being here for us and for everything you've done in your prior service as well. Going forward, yeah, as far as exemplifying professionalism and dedication, honor, I don't think we could have had two better candidates than Corporal Anderson and Sergeant Eiler. Matt is one of our newer corporals and supervisors in the agency, but he's been a true example, working hard. He sets example for his officers. He's very dedicated and committed to his profession, Army veteran. He's a coach in the community, husband and family man. So I'm greatly appreciative of his efforts, and he's, you know, expecting a lot out of him going forward. And Sergeant Eiler, absolutely. He supervises our detective units, which oversees all the follow-up investigations. But on top of that, one of the biggest projects he spearheaded, I think, probably in the valley in a long time, was the Child Advocacy Center. That took a lot of, not only professional time, but much of his personal time to get the center up and running to be a true resource for the community. So a lot, a lot of things for Nick and what he's done for not only our police department, but also our community. And I think anybody who read the paper over the weekend also saw the article, those are him and his detectives involved with trying to make this community and our children safer. So again, I am appreciative of all his efforts, and I think these two gentlemen are definitely very deserving. Thank you very much again.
Thank you, Chief Kuzic, Chief Reitmeyer, VFW, and American Legion for your service and for the presentations tonight. Thank you very much. Council, that moves us to Roman numeral four, C, July financial report, financial report for July 2025 in accordance with Idaho Code 50-208. There is no oral report tonight, council, unless you have questions. Otherwise, it is included in your package. Council, that takes us to the consent agenda, number five, Roman numeral five. All items on the consent agenda are considered routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions on these issues unless the councilor so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered on the active agenda under items moved from the consent agenda.
Mayor.
Counselor Forsman?
I'd like to remove vouchs payable from the consent agenda.
Vouchs payable will be removed. Counselors? Counselor Forsman.
I move to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Forsman, second by Counselor Schroder, to approve the Consent Agenda as amended. Those, oh, it's a roll call. Clerk Rocky?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you. Counsel, motion carries. We'll now move to Roman numeral six, our Active Agenda, Item A, Advisory Board and Commission Appointments. Number one is the Audit Committee concerning appointment of Robert Bob Rogers to a three-year term. This is an action item, and counsel, I can tell you that I visited with Mr. Rogers and found him to be a good candidate for this position, and I move to approve the appointment of Robert Bob Rogers to a three-year term on the Audit Committee.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the appointment of Robert Bob Rogers to a three-year term on the Audit Committee. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, well, that's, thank you for saying that. I don't know what I'm going to have to do to scream. Yeah, I appreciate you telling me. Thank you, sir. I will, I will try to raise my voice here, see if I can't do that better. Our next item is Item Two, Disability Advisory Commission, concerning reappointing Jessica Granger to a three-year term beginning September 12, 2025, at the end of her current term. Again, I met with Jessica Granger and found her to be a good candidate for this commission, and I move to approve the reappointment of Jessica Granger to a three-year term on the Disability Advisory Commission, beginning on September 12, 2025.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the reappointment of Jessica Granger to a three-year term on the Disability Advisory Commission, beginning on September 12, 2025. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Counselors will next move to Item Number Three, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, considering appointing Christine Steen and Thomas King to three-year terms. This is an action item. And again, I met with both of these candidates and found them to be good candidates for our Parks and Recreation Commission. And I first will take up the nomination of Christine Steen. I move to approve the appointment of Christine Steen to a three-year term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the appointment of Christine Steen to a three-year term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. I move to approve the appointment of Thomas King to a three-year term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission.
Second.
It's been moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Forsman, to approve the appointment of Thomas King to a three-year term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We do have some of our nominees in the audience tonight, if you'd just wave anyway, so the council knows who you are. Thank you.
Mayor.
We have one more to go. Yes, sir.
Can I make a quick comment?
Counselor?
I also was in the interview process for Christine Steen and Thomas King, and they both seemed very excited and eager and wanting to bring back more to the community and be involved, and so I think they were a good fit for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Counselor. Next, we'll move to Roman, well, number four, into Roman numeral six, Planning and Zoning Commission, concerning appointing Zachary Battles to a four-year term beginning October 11, 2025. Again, I visited with Zachary and found Zachary to be a good candidate for this position, and I move to approve the appointment of Zachary Battles to a four-year term in the Planning and Zoning Commission, beginning October 11, 2025.
Second.
Been moved by the mayor, second by Counselor Schroder, to approve the appointment of Zachary Battles to a four-year term on the Planning and Zoning Commission, beginning October 11, 2025. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Well, I want to say thank you to our Advisory Board and Commission appointees that are here. We still have some left in the audience with us tonight, but we appreciate your service and willingness to come forward and spend the time. It's very important, I know for me, to hear from our commissions, that if you have some ideas and things that you can share with us to help us do our job better, but also to make the city a better place. I think it's a very important role that you play. I know the departments, the directors appreciate your involvement and guidance that you provide, and then also, too, if you have some ideas, some new ideas on where you want to see your city go, or how you think we can do things better, you know, it's a two-way thing. We should bring that to the commission, and the commission should bring that back to us. So again, thank you very much for your service. Counsel, next we'll move to Roman numeral six, B, Resolution 2025-34, considering repealing and replacing the city of Lewiston's purchasing policy. This is an action item, and we have our Finance Director, Amy Gordon, with us here tonight. We also have.
Patty.
Yeah.
Patty Wade.
I'm just going to draw a blank, but yeah, this happens to me. Oh, and Sandy's hiding back there. Oh, my gosh. Counselor, we have, we have a big part of our A Team here tonight. If you have questions about the new purchasing policy, otherwise, I'm sure they would be happy to have you entertain a motion, so nobody has to stand up, but I'll leave that up to you if you've had a chance to review that policy or have any questions.
Mayor.
Counselor Schroder or Forsman?
I was trying to find what our, because I think it's saying here that we are amending the amount allowed before going to council, if I remember correctly, and I don't remember what the current amount is. What did we have before and what are we adopting now? I think it was over $200,000 now, but I don't know what the, I guess, so.
Amy Gordon, Finance Director. I didn't bring the original copy of the purchasing policy, but what the revised policy that you have before you does is bring those limits to the state statutes. So this year, the state legislators changed those thresholds. This would bring our policy up-to-date to those thresholds.
Follow-up?
Counselor?
Are we required to do that?
You are not required. You could have a policy that was stricter than state, than the state statutes.
Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-34.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to approve Resolution 2025-34. Clerk Rocky?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next, we move to Item C, Resolution 2025-38, considering approving the Palisades and Southport Study Addendum to 2019 Water System Facility Plan. This is authored by American Company and dated May 2025. Action item, we have our Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson, with us here tonight. If you have questions for him, otherwise, counsel, I would entertain a motion. You've seen this before. Counselor Schroder?
I move to approve Resolution 2025-38.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Wright, to approve Resolution 2025-38. Clerk Rocky?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Next, we'll move to Letter D, Ordinances. Number one, second and third readings, Item A, Ordinance 4955, considering ordering a special bond election to be held on the question of the issuance of a general obligation bond to the city of Lewiston in an amount not to exceed $22,540,000 for the purpose of constructing improvements to wastewater, water, stormwater, and road infrastructure-related improvements in costs, establishing the date and time of the special bond election, approving a form of ballot, providing for registration of voters, and providing for related matters. This is an action item. And again, counsel, if you have questions, our Public Works Director, Dustin Johnson, is here to answer questions about the projects. Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion. Counselor Schroder?
I move to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days and to combine the second and third readings.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forsman, to dispense with the requirement that an ordinance be read on three different days and to combine the second and third readings. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Schroder?
I make a motion to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance Number 4955 and approve the reading of Ordinance Number 4955 by title only.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Forsman, to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance Number 4955 and approve the reading of Ordinance Number 4955 by title only. There further discussion or amendments? Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Clerk Rocky?
Approving the second and third readings of Ordinance 4955, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, Nesbitt County, Idaho, ordering a special bond election to be held on the question of the issuance of general obligation bonds of the city in an amount not to exceed $22,540,000 for the purpose of constructing improvements to wastewater, water, stormwater, and road infrastructure and related improvements in costs, establishing the date and time of the special bond election, approving a form of ballot, providing for registration of voters, providing for related matters, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counsel, next we move to D2, Third Readings, Item A, Ordinance 4952, considering amending Ordinance 4923, the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30, 2025, appropriating additional monies that are to be received in the sum of $11,103,220. This is an action item. Counselor Schroder?
I move to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance Number 4952 and approve the reading by title only.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance Number 4952 and approve the reading by title only. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Counsel, next we move to Item B, Ordinance 4950, to be termed the 2026 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, considering appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes, the city of Lewiston, for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026. This is an action item. We have our Finance Director with us here tonight. If you have additional questions, counsel, otherwise, I would entertain a motion. Counselor Schroder?
I move to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance Number 4950 and approve the reading by title only.
Second.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance 4950 and approve the reading by title only. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Rocky?
Approving the third reading of Ordinance 4950, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston to be termed the 2026 Annual Appropriation Ordinance, appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston, Idaho, for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counselors, next to Item C, Ordinance 4951, considering fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limbs of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesbitt County in the amount of $25,4240, providing a certified copy of the 2026 Annual Appropriation Ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesbitt County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. This is an action item. Counselor Schroder?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance Number 4951 and approve the reading by title only.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to waive the third reading in full of Ordinance 4951 and approve the reading by title only.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Wright?
Is, is this the portion where if I have any changes to the budget, I would make this here? Or is that another portion of the budget or another portion of the agenda? If I have an amendment?
Counselor, it's not. That was the previous ordinance.
Oh, to make an amendment to the budget was the previous one?
This ordinance is for the tax certification, so the previous amendment, previous ordinance was for the budget to approve the third reading in full of Ordinance 4950, which was the 2026 Annual Appropriation Ordinance. I'm going to put a set ease for a minute because I want to ask legal a question so that I can advise counsel properly. So we'll be at a ease for the time being. Thank you.[1596.75]
Thank you, Mayor. Counselors, Jennifer Tengano, City Attorney. To clarify, which I thought we were going to do this before the vote, but to clarify, a motion to reconsider is a procedural motion under Lewiston City Code, section two dash twenty-six, subparagraph J, subparagraph four, and it's a motion to reconsider an action taken by the city council, and it must be made prior to the adjournment of the city council meeting or prior to the ordinance becoming effective, whichever is earlier. When a motion is made by a city councillor, they have to be on the prevailing side of the original vote, which Counselor Wright was originally, and it has to be seconded by any city councillor and requires a majority vote of the city council. And a motion to reconsider is debatable, and it has precedence over all of other motions. So there is a prior motion outstanding for the next ordinance, and once we've concluded this reconsideration, we will take up that matter from where it was. The motion was made and seconded, and so it's still open for discussion and vote. We're just putting that on hold for right now and then going back to the third reading of ordinance forty-nine fifty.
Thank you, Jennifer. Counselors, any questions for our city attorney? Okay, thank you, Jennifer. So, counselors, you heard the motion for reconsideration on ordinance forty-nine fifty, and I will read this for you again, ordinance forty-nine fifty, to be termed the twenty-twenty-six annual appropriation ordinance, considering appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the City of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October one, twenty-twenty-five, and ending September thirty, twenty-twenty-six. This is an action item. And counselors, I am going to ask for a motion to waive the third reading. That will require a second, and then we will get into any amendments that you may have. Is that clear? Okay, thank you. So I would entertain a motion.
About the eleven thousand, right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-nine fifty-two and approve the reading by title only.
Excuse me, Counselor Forstman.
Was that wrong?
Is that ordinance number forty-nine fifty or ordinance forty-nine fifty-two?
Sorry, forty-nine fifty-two.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, again.
No.
Forty-nine fifty.
Forty-nine fifty.
Oh, I was reading the wrong one. Nope, forty-nine fifty. I can read it again. Followed you because I was on the wrong spot. Okay. Motion to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-nine fifty and approve the reading by title only. Clearable water.
Been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Klein, to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number forty-nine fifty and approve the reading by title only. Counselors, is there any discussion or amendments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Wright?
Yes, so I have a motion, but I have a question first for Director Gordon.
Amy, please introduce yourself for the record. Thank you.
Amy Gordon, City Treasurer.
Thank you. So just a clarification, the amount of money that would need to be reduced in the budget to avoid increased taxes, is that two-hundred forty-one thousand, two-hundred and ninety-five dollars? Is that the amount?
Be right back. Counselor Wright, based off the amount you just stated, I think what you're asking is to reduce the amount of forgone taxes that are in the proposed budget, which the amount of the forgone taxes as it currently stands right now is two-hundred twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Any amendments to this ordinance could change that amount, but there would still be an increase in the property tax budget. If you remove the forgone taxes, there still is an increase in the property tax budget.
Right, right.
Okay. Just wanted to make certain you were clear.
And that's what I was trying to clarify. So the amount, I just asked, what is the amount of money that needs to be reduced in the budget to not increase taxes?
So when we do not increase taxes, to have a zero percent increase on your property tax base?
Correct.
I don't have the amount right in front of me. I can get it. It's going to be like nine-hundred and sixty-five thousand?
Nine-hundred and sixty-five thousand. And there was another number that I had had earlier of two-hundred and sixteen thousand?
So when we published the public hearing notice on forgone taxes, we still had some estimated values because we had not received our final L-two form from the county. So we were making an estimate of the new construction values, an estimate of annexation, and then an estimate of the personal property tax replacement dollars. So once we trued all those numbers up, the actual amount of forgone taxes in the proposed budget went from two-hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, and I think two-hundred and fifty, to two-hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars.
Okay.
So we take, we go, we can publish higher, and then we can adjust down from there. We just couldn't have levied beyond that two-hundred and forty-one thousand that we published in our public hearing notice.
Okay. Thank you. I was just making sure I understood that for my motion.
Let me, if you can give me one moment, Mayor, I'll make an adjustment to my numbers that I have written here.
Counsel, be these.
[Music]
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 Counselor Wright. As an amendment that he would like to offer up for your consideration. Counselor Wright.
Thank you. I would move to amend ordinance number 4950 to remove the funding of Police Protection Fund, $95,490 for one new police officer position, and reduce the fleet services capital rates by all departments by an equal percentage totaling 116,579 for an overall reduction of 212,069.
Been moved by Counselor Wright, seconded by Counselor Klein. Remove the funding from the Police Protection Fund of 95,490 for one new police officer position and reduce the fleet services capital rates by, for all departments by an equal percentage totaling 116,579 for an overall reduction of 212,069. Counselor Wright, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes. So by reducing this amount, we can renew, remove the amount of money for the forgone taxes. And this seemed like the most appropriate way that I could find to achieve that. Still allowing for two new positions in the police department.
Counselor Klein?
Are we off by 700 dollars to do that? Because the, the forgone taxes was 212,769?
The amount of forgone taxes in the budget currently is 212,769.
And Director Gordon, the motion as I, as moved by Counselor Wright, seconded by Counselor Klein, totaled 212,069. So Counselor Klein's question is, does that leave 700 dollars of forgone taxes that we would levy with this motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Director. Well, I apologize for that. I, I thought the amount of money that I checked was the correct amount. Well, then I would, I would adjust that in the fleet services rate, but I'll need to make a new motion to do that, I believe.
Counselor Wright, I'm gonna ask for a vote on the original motion because, uh, to keep it clean, we're gonna vote on these, individually, we're not gonna entertain substitute motions or amended motions. When we have a motion on the floor, it's just easier for the bookkeeping to do that. So if counsel understands the question, then I will ask those in favor of the motion to signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Counselor Wright.
We'll adjust that.
Counselor, why don't we go at ease for just a minute if you'd like to talk?
[Music]
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 Counsel, prior to going at ease, again, there was a motion made by Counselor Forrester, seconded by Counselor Klein to waive the third reading in full of ordinance 4950 and approve the reading by title only. That passed. And then Counselor Wright offered an amendment, seconded by Counselor Klein. It failed. And with that, counsel, I will open it back up for further amendments.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Wright?
Yes, I would move to amend ordinance number 4950 by removing the funding of a, of police protection funds by 95,490 for one new police officer position and reduce the fleet services capital rates by all departments by an equal percentage totaling 117,279 for an overall reduction of 212,769.
Hey, counsel, it was moved by Counselor Wright, seconded by Counselor Klein, to remove the funding of police protection funds by 95,490 for one new police officer position and reduce the fleet services capital rates for all departments by an equal percentage totaling 117,279 for an overall reduction of 212,769. Counselor Wright, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, I believe this was the, the most efficient way I could find to reduce the budget for the amount of the forgone taxes while still leaving the police department two new positions.
Thank you, Counselor. Further discussion. Counselor Spicklemeyer?
So, question for Counselor Wright. So the reduction in the fleet service capital fund, where, where's the impact? What's that gonna impact?
The impact would be with vehicles that need replaced or maintenance to vehicles, potentially. The, it, it would be at the, my understanding is at the discretion of the director of the area. That could be to one of the new street sweepers or another piece of equipment that they decide not to, not to purchase.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
So I guess my concern there, and I commend you for trying to do, you know, it's work you're doing, but in my opinion, I know that the departments put forward their requests to the mayor. They sit down, they talk through all their requests of what their needs, and they reduce it a lot from what was originally requested. I just kind of feel that they've narrowed it down to what they need. Are we shortchanging them from what they need to save 116, you know? Is it, is the impact worth the cost?
Further counsel comments? Counselor Shorter?
I feel very similar to that. I, I do not feel that we want to reduce an officer. And certainly, as Counselor Spicklemeyer said, with the, the fleet services is doing their minimum amount of money that they can work with. So I, I just don't feel at this stage of the game that we should cut ourselves down to the wick when we are doing this.
Counselors, I don't see any more questions. Counselor Forrester?
With that, I just, yes, is that fleet, that under operating expenses that we're wanting to take out of, so like personnel, personnel services, supplies, materials, services, and charges, and capital? Or is that under fleet personnel? What exactly are we cutting by? Like that two categories of operating expenses summary by type within activity in our budget guide. Personnel services, supplies, materials, services, and charges, and capital.
This is for the capital, fleet capital services.
So the three. In my head here.
Counselor Forrester, the motion was to remove funding of, from the police protection funds for one new officer and then reduce fleet services capital for all departments.
Mayor?
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
I guess a question on the follow-up with Counselor Forrester's is, isn't that, that capital project, fleet services capital projects dollar, it's like 499,000 total? Right? It's where I, what I found. That's for the capital?
So in here, it's line 86, under, if I'm understanding correctly, is that would take out of recreations capital, finances capital, utility billing capital, purchasing golf. All those departments, right? If I'm understanding the motion correctly? I don't know what that equates to as far as the, as far as the final dollar amount. But I, without, without really knowing how much this is going to affect providing basic services. Not sure I'm comfortable with it. Probably be okay with the one less police officer, but mind me, we are getting bigger. And the bigger we get, the further behind we get, having that population to police protection. Facial. I think my biggest, I guess what I'll say is my biggest concern is some of the, like wastewater and water rates that we've had in the past, we continuously not raised. not raised and raised and raised, and then things just continued to get more expensive. And then eventually, we had to raise, we had to raise the budget or the services amount. And that was a huge hit instead of if we'd done incrementally. And now we're affecting citizens with more of a big hit than as if we took little bits to try to get us up to where we are, giving adequate police protection, fire protection, roads, and making sure that we are funding those appropriately. And I'm just concerned that if we continue to just can cut the fat, that we're eventually going to cut too much fat, and we're going to have to raise, and then maybe even have to raise too much. And now people are hitting, getting a bigger hit than as if we had incrementally worked that in. That makes sense. We have seen that in other budgets that we have chosen not to increase rates on, and then now we had to do big increases versus if we had done little ones incrementally throughout the years.
Hey, counsel, I don't see any hands up. So, I'm going to ask for those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those not in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Counsel, I want to make sure you have every opportunity. This is your budget. Is there further amendments? If there are no further amendments, we're going to go back to the main motion, which is to waive the third reading in full of ordinance 4950 and approve the reading by title only. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails. Counselor Wright?
Did that, that failed? I thought it, wasn't it?
That requires, that vote requires four, four votes. So, we've got a few more hours here before it hits midnight. So, we've got a lot of time. We've been here till midnight before. But counselors, you do have before you ordinance 4950 to be termed the 2026 annual appropriation ordinance, considering appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026. Again, this is an action item. Counselors, yes, Counselor Schroder?
I have a question. So, this is reverting completely back to the beginning, the original ordinance? Is that correct?
This is the third reading, yes.
Yes, of this ordinance. It didn't make any changes to it?
No.
Okay. And I, I will move to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4950 and approve the reading by title only. Second?
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Forstman to waive the third reading in full of ordinance number 4950 and approve the reading by title only. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Clerk Rocky?
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4950, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston to be termed the 2026 annual appropriation ordinance appropriating sums of money authorized by law and deemed necessary for all general and special municipal purposes of the city of Lewiston, Idaho, for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Counsel, that takes us to item C, ordinance 4951, considering fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperse County in the amount of $25,424, providing a certified copy of the 2026 annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperse County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the 2025-2026 fiscal year. And I'm going to phone my friend, City Attorney Jennifer Tengano. City Attorney Tengano, previously, we had a motion made by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer. Shall we return to that and call the vote on that or entertain a new motion?
Mayor, you may return to that prior motion that was on the table before the city council.
Thank you. Counselors, it was moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to waive the third reading in full of ordinance 4951 and approve the reading by title only. Are there any discussions or amendments before I call for the vote? Here, none. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Clerk Rocky?
Approving the third reading of ordinance 4951, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston, fixing and establishing the tax certification on all taxable properties situated within the corporate limits of the city of Lewiston for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2025, and ending September 30, 2026, for the purpose of providing and raising monies for municipal and corporate purposes, providing for the tax certification to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperse County, Idaho, in the amount of $25,4250, providing a certified copy of the 2026 annual appropriation ordinance to the Board of County Commissioners of Nesperse County, Idaho, as adopted by the city of Lewiston for the 2025 to 2026 fiscal year, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Could I ask you just to repeat that amount? $25 million, what?
Forty.
Am I backwards? You need to read it again?
Counselor, please. Hey, counsel, prior to going to these, I had read the description on ordinance 4951, and there's a typo in there. The correct amount is $25,4250, as read by our city clerk. Our agenda is typed up incorrectly. So, the clerk did read the correct title and the dollar amount of $25,4250. Counsel, we'll next move to item number three, adoption and approval of ordinance summaries. Item A, ordinance 4955, this is an action item. Counselor Schroder?
I move to, I move to adopt ordinance number 4955 and approve the related ordinance summary.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to adopt ordinance 4955 and approve the related ordinance summary. Clerk Rocky?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Rocky. Next, we move to item four, adoption. Item A, ordinance 4952, ordinance 4950, and ordinance 4951. Counselor Schroder?
I move to adopt ordinance numbers 4950, 4951, and 4952.
Been moved by Counselor Schroder, seconded by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to adopt ordinance numbers 4950, 4951, and 4952. Clerk Rocky?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forstman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Next, we move to Roman numeral seven, public hearings and related action items. Item A, public hearing, forgone taxes, accepting testimony on the consideration of utilizing a portion of forgone taxes in the amount of, better double check this, $212,769 for maintenance and operation purposes and consideration of accruing forgone tax, that is reserving the right to recover forgone tax for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2026. This is an action item. And I'm going to look to our finance director to make sure we're, school come on everything.
Mayor, Jennifer Tengano, city attorney, I just wanted to note that there's a public hearing for this, and just wondering if you've opened it yet, or are you just asking a clarifying question?
Thank you, City Attorney Tengano. I want to clarify that I read the forgone dollar amount properly.
So, the amount that was noticed in the public hearing, notice in, that was published, is a higher amount because at the time, that was the amount was estimated. And so, that's the amount that's subject to the public hearing. The amount that actually gets adopted will be adjusted following the public hearing.
Thank you, Attorney Tengano. So, counsel, I would like to rewrite that, re-read this to you, just so we're very clear for the public. Public hearing, forgone taxes, accepting testimony and the consideration of utilizing a portion of forgone taxes in the amount of $241,295 for maintenance and operation purposes and consideration of accruing forgone tax, that is reserving the right to recover forgone tax for fiscal year ending September 30, 2026. Counselors, I will, we will have a staff presentation from our finance director, Amy Gordon. We will accept testimony from the public if there is any testimony tonight. As a reminder, no additional evidence or testimony may be received once the public hearing is closed. So, this is the time to ask any questions you might have with the public, the applicant, and/or staff, and then I will close the public hearing. So, with that, counselors, I will open the public hearing and turn it over to our finance director, Amy Gordon. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you, Mayor Amy Gordon, city treasurer. So, the state of Idaho allows the city to, if you don't fully levy the 3% increase to your tax base that the council's allowed to do, you can reserve those forgone taxes to levy in a subsequent year. To do so, it requires a public hearing. Likewise, if you, in a subsequent year, levy forgone taxes that were reserved in a prior year, it also requires a public hearing. When we wrote the proposed budget, we had the full 3% property tax in the budget. So, that's unlike the three previous years where we had a 0% property tax base. So, in those prior years, you, the only choice you had in regards to forgone taxes was to reserve them because we weren't utilizing any forgone taxes in the proposed budget. This year, we utilized forgone taxes in the proposed budget. However, through the reading of the ordinances and the final adoption of the budget, council could have removed those taxes, reduced it even further, which at that point, you would go from utilizing forgone taxes to the ability to reserve forgone taxes. So, we drafted our public hearing notice in a manner that addressed both options that could potentially be before council tonight. Because you just adopt, based on the budget you just adopted, it leaves $212,769 of forgone taxes in the budget. The reason this amount is different from the original public hearing notice is we were still working off some estimates that we had in regards to new construction, annexation, and personal property tax replacement dollars. About three days after we submitted our public hearing notice to the Tribune for publication, we got those final numbers, and so we made the appropriate adjustments, which is how we got from the $241,000 down to the $212,000 figure. But at this point in time, based off the budget council just adopted, you would be utilizing forgone taxes that were reserved in prior years to fund your 26 budget in the amount of $212,769. In council's packet, we had a resolution that, one, should you reserve taxes, and one should you levy the forgone taxes. So, resolution 2025-36 would be the resolution council would need to approve tonight, and they would need to do that with an amended amount of $212,769.
Counselors, do you have questions for Director Gordon?
Mayor?
Counselor Forstman?
I just want to make sure I have my recollection correctly. So, if we, doing the 3%, right? That's what we're talking about right now, using the maximum 3?
No, we are talking about the $212,769 of forgone taxes in the proposed budget that was just adopted.
Right, so...
That's outside the 3%.
Okay, I'm trying to recall. So, if you, if we like, say we were going to take our trip for capital, I think, I think it's capital projects or something, the 5%, and that would have to go to a vote, and then that would be a one-time or one-year cycle? Or does that stay within the tax base, the tax, the level?
So, the rules on forgone taxes is you're limited to 1% for operations and maintenance, which is what we're utilizing it for, for this budget. There are the, there is the option with forgone taxes that you can levy an additional 3% for capital. That's a one-time levy. You levy it, it's gone, it's no longer part of your tax base. It's in your tax base one year, and then it drops out in perpetuity. So, that doesn't apply, though, to what we're discussing tonight.
Which is the 1% prefer?
Yeah, I mean, it's not exactly 1%.
Well, for us, for, for the purpose of...
The, the forgone taxes we're talking about tonight is what's in the proposed budget.
Right.
In the amount of $212,769, which is being levied for operations and maintenance. And it's within the 1%. It's under 1%, but it's within that 1% cap.
And that, that carries throughout.
It will stay in your tax base in future years. Yes.
Thank you.
Counselors, further questions for Director Gordon? Director, let me ask if there's any testimony from the public. I don't see any testimony. Counselors, if there's no further questions? Yes, sir. Okay.
Amy, I know you do a great job, but this is really hard, I think, for us to follow a little bit. So, you're saying that...
Please introduce yourself for the record.
My name's Travis Meeks, Lewiston resident. So, with this forgone taxes, they've already passed in their budget, but they have to pass this to be able to levy that money at this point?
The amount's unknown until we know what the final budget is.
So, we haven't passed the budget yet? I thought they did pass the budget. Right. So, we do have the amount. So, this is going to be more, is what we're saying on our taxes, correct?
Is that correct?
Correct. I think we're overtaxed already. If you search anywhere in Idaho, we're number two, Lewiston, as far as tax rate per capita. I know you're saying gross, but last population poll, I just polled, we're down 144 people. You know, I think that you guys have a hat job. You've done a great job balancing the budget the last three years. You guys failed on the bond mainly because there's no trust. I know, because I pushed that bond real hard. I tried to get that through for you guys. I'm in a position where I talk to a lot of people. But when it came right down to it, the more I tried to push... I tried to push the bond for you guys to be able to do that project, the more I got kickback. And pretty soon, they weren't even trusting what I was saying because they don't trust you that much. And now, we're gonna bring more taxes, and now you want to bond in November. I just don't think you're gonna get, you go, I already got this. I don't think your bond has a chance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ah, we still in public.
Counselor Forsman?
Now, if I'm thinking of this correctly, for one, just for clarification for growth, I was more referring not to new businesses and manufacturers that we have coming, which is gonna help offset that tax base and bring more monies to the levy. So, then it'll, so more of the burden will be on industrial versus homeowners, is what I was referring to for growth, just for clarification. But even with this, and seeing new manufacturers come, there is, you could even still see, and correct me if I'm wrong, a decrease in your property taxes. Because that's based on home valuations and also whether we have this manufacturers and big businesses offsetting that tax base. And currently, that went down because we lost a lot of, like, big lots and those types of big retailers. And now, that's slowly coming back up with having four slides come in, hopefully Cascade, a new manufacturer comes in in January, some of the other ones I can't think of at the moment. That will then bring that more to the tax base. And again, correct me if I'm wrong. That is how, that is how I've been understanding it. That doesn't mean we're coming in here raising your taxes due to ungodly malater. We're gonna get this huge hit.
Counselors, you may ask questions of the public, of the testimony received too. So, I want to make sure you have every opportunity before we close out the public hearing.
Mayor? Oh, we're waiting. Sorry, excuse me.
My name's Linda Malali from the city of Lewiston. And you talked about taking that two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars from just one place. I'm wondering, is there any other place in our budget where we have a little extra slack? Like, nobody has ever said anything. What's going on with the community park at ninety-seven million dollars? Are we still pouring money into that? And it seems like two-hundred-and-twelve thousand would be a small amount to take away from that. With the bond that's coming up, I've never seen what's included in that. Are we still talking about three roundabouts going in? I, I don't know. I've never read. I've never heard what that takes. But it seems like two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars in the overall picture is such a small amount to be even quibbling about because we have such a large budget. But I do think we need to think hard about raising property taxes too much more.
Thank you. I do want to ask, answer your question because you asked, and this is a public hearing, and I don't want to turn this opportunity down, but we are not discussing roundabouts. So, the Idaho Transportation Department will take the lead on that. It's there right away. But it's not part of the discussion right now. And I would tell you with a community park, there are a few dollars that go into that effort, but really, it goes into the Parks and Recreation Department budget. And as you know, we have some new people that are working on that, and we have some work to do. But at some point down the road, we'll be talking about that, you know, and the public will have opportunities to weigh in on that. But it won't be, it's not being funded through property tax increases or anything like that. It'll come back. We had an open house on that probably three years ago where we asked the public what they thought about the park and how to fund it. So, we'll just return to that format and then move forward.
You know, I guess, I guess I'm just thinking that taking the money away from police officers is, is not where I'd like to see it come from. And if there's any other slack in the budget where it could come from, you know, I don't know how you move money around, but it just seems like, you know, that, that's a small amount to quibble over.
Thank you, and thank you for being here. Is there further testimony from the public? Hey, counsel, this is your last chance to ask questions of Director Gordon, or I'm going to close the public hearing. Counselor Forsman?
Was, just so I have clarification, was I somewhat, was I right in kind of my, like, a little bit of a, to make sure I'm explaining this correctly?
I mean, that's a, that's a big answer in question. I, I mean, we all, both residential and commercial property owners are part of our total assessed value. And we, that's how you get to your levy rate, is a dollar amount that this county, the city is levying for taxes divided by the total assessed market value will equal the levy rate without knowing what those assessed values are in total and that breakout between residential and commercial. You, I can't answer that question.
Right.
But I mean, in theory, if commercial properties are going up at a higher rate than residential, that there'll be more of a shift to commercial taxpayers paying the bigger piece of that pie. We saw that a few years ago where there was such a significant increase in residential property values in compared to commercial values that, that shift went to residential property taxpayers. I, I have a friend who owns a business in town, and she said, geez, my homeowner's taxes went up so much this year. I said, well, what happened to your commercial property? She's like, those dropped quite a bit. So, there is definitely a connection to your property tax bill and whether commercial values are growing more than residential or vice versa. There's a connection there, but I don't know what that will be for this tax year.
Counselor Forsman?
Yeah, thank you. I obviously wasn't wanting any predictions because, you know, we don't, we're not able to know that. More of a general understanding of how those affect each other was what I was trying to articulate. So, thank you for that. Because we haven't levied taxes in the past three years. We have done the zero percent. Yet, you still did see increases because, like, as you said, the industrial businesses saw less of a property tax, or they didn't have to pay as many, whereas the homers saw more. So.
Well, one other thing to remember is if you live in the city of Lewiston, you also live within the county's taxing district, you live within the port's taxing district, and depending on where you live within the city, you might be in COSD's taxing district, but you would then also be part of the school district's tax, district. So, when you get your property tax bill, it's more than just the city of Lewiston on there.
I think that's kind of the big misconception a lot is that we're, we continue to raise it when we haven't raised. And so, I'm just, I'm just trying to make some clarifications here on, on the thinking of the city and the concerns of not providing adequate budgets for our firemen and for our police and our basic services so that we can provide vehicles that are gonna work and not break down on the side of the road, do the maintenance that we need to do, make sure we're taking care of the roads. I, I, if we could find somewhere to cut that, you know, it's like, no one cares about it. I'm totally okay with that. I, I've looked through this budget, and I looked through this budget. Aside from maybe telling people to not get as many sticky notes or buy as many pens, which, I mean, probably do a little bit, but I'm not sure we get to two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar savings on that. So, I don't know. I, I haven't been able to find anywhere that would not affect the city and, and the way we do business. And we have proceeded not to raise taxes the past three years. And we are, but we are trying to get more industrial businesses here so that we can get more of a higher tax base so that it offloads the burden on the taxpayer. And that, that's really where you're gonna see the savings.
Hey, counsel, if there's no further questions, comments of the staff and/or the public, I'm gonna close this public hearing. Thank you, Director Gordon. Counsel, we'll next move to Roman numeral seven, C, Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-six, considering certifying, and I'm gonna correct the amount of what you have in front of you, please strike two forty-one, two ninety-five, and instead insert two twelve seven sixty-nine in your agendas. Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-six, considering certifying two-hundred-and-twelve thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars of foregone taxes to be budgeted by the city of Lewiston for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six for the purpose of maintenance and operations pursuant to Idaho Code sixty-three, sixty-three dash eight oh two, print one, print E, print double I, action item. And we have our finance director here, Amy Gordon. Otherwise, counsel, I would approve or entertain a motion. Counselor Schroder?
No, I have a question.
Counselor Schroder?
Did we do this motion for the two thousand and twenty-five, thirty-five?
Counselor, we're not gonna do that one because two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-five would be to reserve somewhere all of the current years allowed for gone.
Oh, that's right. Okay, thank you.
And instead, what council did in the budget was to use this year's foregone.
Yes, sorry.
And so, that was the title I just read you. That's fine.
I will make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-six.
Second.
Excuse me. Sorry, Jennifer Tengano, City Attorney. Counselor Schroder, for your motion, can you please also include a motion to amend it? Because as currently written, it does have the
Yes.
two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars in it.
Thank you. I make a motion to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-six as it is amended from two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five to two-hundred-and-twelve thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine. Am I correct? Thank you.
It's been moved by Counselor Schroder, second by Counselor Spicklemeyer, to approve Resolution two thousand and twenty-five dash thirty-five as amended from two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars to two-hundred-and-twelve thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars of foregone, of foregone taxes. Clerk Brockie?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Clerk Brockie, and thank you, City Attorney Jennifer Tengano. Counsel, we now move to Roman numeral eight, item move from the consent agenda. Counselor Forsman?
I don't actually think the person that I have a question for is here to answer. So, we'll see. Well, no, maybe not. This is for transportation, and on page nine of fourteen. I know if you're labeled LCB, ARC, oh, no, I'm sorry, the LCB Down and Dirty Mud Run Refund PUB ASS APP for the amount of one-hundred-and-forty dollars. I'm just curious what exactly, what, what that is, what that entails.
Director Gordon?
Or some kind of advertisement?
I'm gonna ask if, if Damien has that information. You don't have that? Okay.
Nine? There it is. So, if they refund, that's why it falls under that miscellaneous customer refund vendor name. And so, that would be a refund of a public assembly application they did. So, they either paid too high of a fee, submitted a duplicate application, but it's a refund of an overpayment.
Oh, okay. That makes sense. Okay, thank you. Oh, that was a lot of that. I'm just curious. That, that was my only one I had. Anybody else have one while we have it?
Is that it, counselor?
Oh, is it?
Okay, thank you. No, thanks for the question. Okay. Counselor Forsman?
I need a motion to approve vouchers payable.
Oh, I make a motion to approve vouchers payable as is.
That good? Been moved by Counselor Forsman, second by Counselor Schroder to prove vouchers payable as presented. Clerk Brockie?
Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Forsman?
Aye.
Counselor Schroder?
Aye.
Counselor Klein?
Aye.
Counselor Spicklemeyer?
Aye.
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Counselor Forsman, for that question, for going over the vouchers payables. Counselors, next we move to Roman numeral nine, unfinished and new business. Item A is city council comments. Comments shall not be related to an item currently before the city council or an item that, excuse me, may come before the city council in the foreseeable future. It shall be, I'm running out here, shall be limited comments, not discussions. Counselor Forsman?
I just want to wish everybody a happy Labor Day. Hopefully, you stay safe, have fun, no driving. Obviously, that is unsafe. And it stayed cool. It's hot out there, and it's supposed to be smoky. Hopefully, the smoke kind of clears up, but just wishing everybody a happy Labor Day.
Are there further counsel comments, anyone? Okay. Next, we have item B, city boards and commissions, liaison updates. Counselor Klein?
I had my airport meeting. They are going to be working on some mill and overlays on a couple of the taxiways. And they're supposed to get their runway life and all that done by November eleventh. And they also received this flexible spending grant for four-hundred-and-fifty thousand that they have until two thousand and twenty-eight to use. So, gives them a little more funding.
Thank you, counselor. Other updates? Counselor Wright?
Yeah, so, I've got a emergency nine-eleven meeting coming up tomorrow, and then public works meeting coming up on Thursday, I believe. And two weeks ago, so I didn't bring it up in the last meeting because that was a special, special session. But two weeks ago, we had the DAC meeting, and the, the new director of Parks and Recs, I don't know if it was first order of business, but it was certainly up there. He got the automatic door opener on the community center. So, that was, that was great. That's been talked about for a little while. And, yeah, he came in and let us all know that he got that done. So, the voting season coming up, disabled folks will be able to hit the button, and the door will open. And then, we got a couple new people on DAC as well, and, and they seemed very excited, and it was a great meeting. That's all.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Schroder?
Okay, we had an MPO meeting, and I left my notes at home, but the only thing I did remember is that we changed the time from four fifteen to four o'clock. So, if you want to see the MPO, it's now at four o'clock.
Thank you, counselor. Next up, mayor comments. First of all, I would like to say thank you to our finance staff. It's not just Amy. She has a lot of folks that help her with that budget, and they spend a lot of time on that, and they're professionals, and they know what they're doing. And I just appreciate their service to the city and to the community. And I do want to thank the council for taking time to go over the budget and to ask questions. That's a very important part of the process. And for the public here, that's very important for us to have that support and that, that feedback. I do want to say a second time hello to Mr. Bob Rogers. Bob, would you raise your Bob, would you raise your hand? He doesn't want to, but he's, Counsel, you appointed him to our audit committee tonight, and he hung in with us tonight, and I'm sure he has a lot of thoughts or questions about how this process happened tonight, but he's gonna be working with us and trying to keep us on the straight and narrow. We just appreciate him serving. Bob has a background too, I think, if I remember right, served on city council at one time too, yeah. So, he's gonna bring a wealth of knowledge to the process. So, again, congratulations and thank you for staying with us tonight, Bob. Counselors, agenda topics. During none, we're gonna jump to Roman numeral 10. Hey, all right. It's been moved by Counselor Forstman, second by Counselor Schroder to adjourn. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we adjourn. Thank you, Counsel.